Good evening and welcome to the City of Isani, City... I got the wrong page. Committee of a whole is what we're currently at. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present minus Councilman Collison. He did call, unfortunately found water in his basement, so he's trying to pump it out, but he'll be here for council. Any... We put public comment in the committee of a whole?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did add it.
Oh, alright. Any public comment in this committee of a whole? None at this time? Let's move on to the items, moving to... Before we go any further, Josie, there is an item that I do want to talk to with the council that I'd like to add to this.
Sure.
We'll mark it as E9. That way Chief Jankovic can get closure or move forward with the COVID relief fund that we got. We can just hash it out right here and now. Alright, let's go on to E1, building inspection fees discussion. Ms. Selman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council's aware, we've been talking about our building fees, permit fees that go along with all our building inspections. In 2003, the City of Isani adopted the State Building Code by ordinance, Chapter 111, and it does state that the applicant... The application enforcement of this code shall be in accordance with the Minnesota State Building Code. So that basically adopting that means that we will require building permits and we will inspect those permits. Right now, we have our fee schedule adopted. We adopt that every year, and that's where our permits are based off of that fee schedule. So for the permits, based on valuation, and then we charge 65% of the permit fee is also charged to that building permit if there is a plan review. Otherwise, if there's no plan review, it's just a straight valuation or a straight flat fee, depending on what permit is. A lot of our over-the-county permits are flat fees for residential, like re-roof siding, mechanical plumbing, those types of things. Anything that has a plan does need to be reviewed, and that's where that 65% fee comes on, and that's 65% of the actual permit fee. We talked to the Department of Labor/Industry. The council had many questions. I put that through to them. I put that in your packet. Hopefully, we answered all those questions. Also, what is in your packet is an RFP, a Request for Proposals for a New Building Inspection Service. So tonight, we need to talk about if we want to do that, if we want to go out for an RFP, if we want to have it in-house, and what you want to do with your fees, because right now, the council's expressed that they are not in favor of what our fee schedule says
I guess my only question and/or thought was I know just recently, I built a deck on my home, and I'll be honest, I didn't have a clue what I needed, and I came to you and asked what I needed, and you pretty much asked me a bunch of questions. I answered them. We came to the conclusion that I didn't need a building permit because my deck was only a foot and a half at most off the ground, and it was not attached to my home, so I didn't need the building permit, but I needed a zoning permit. So my next question was, what am I zoning?
So according to city code, we do require zoning permits for certain things, and that is one of them that is in our city code. Basically, we make sure you meet setbacks is the primary reason why we look at that.
Okay, and then that zoning permit cost me $80?
Yeah, all zoning permit fees are in the fee schedule that you adopt every single year, so that's why it's at that $80 fee.
So I guess my question to the council would be, do we feel that's efficient for each and every resident we have in the city?
Well, I think we should review what that money goes to. I mean, I see it come up, and I guess I should have asked more questions in the past, and you know, I just assume we've adopted it based on the need for running the city to have people build a deck or electrical inspection or whatever, but...
Well, what it consists of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Selman, is you would have... I'd have to fill out that permit, and I submit it to you. You grant that permit, and then once I'm done, you come out and you inspect it. So essentially, we're paying for Ms. Selman to come out and inspect it. Do we pay you $80 an hour? I guess that would be my next question.
You could if you want, but no.
Sure, we could.
Yeah, it's for our time to meet with you, talk with you, review the permit, the plans, if there's a plan, and make sure it meets setbacks, and then go out and do the inspection. And inspections are based on the applicant calling and setting up an inspection time to go out there.
Here's my concern to the council is I'm not looking to nickel-and-dime every resident we have. If we have to cover our overhead costs, then so be it. But I'm not looking to make money off our residents as far as this is concerned. Who the heck's going to want to move to our city if that's the case?
No, I agree, but so what's your proposal? Go...
I think we need...
Every individual?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, then let's do it. I'm in favor of it.
Mayor, if I may, one thing I would like to add in how the fees are calculated, and you mentioned about covering staff's costs of time, which equivalates to things that we're paying, and you know, we have to, in essence, raise taxes if we're not collecting fees to cover those time. While some permits come in, may take as little as 15, 20 minutes to review, there are other permits, and the zoning permit is an umbrella of many different items, types of work being done. Some things take more time. Some things go through Sheila, or go through Ryan, the community specialist, go through Sheila. Some get kicked over to Public Works for Mr. Sylvester to go out and have his team mark sewer, water, or storm, like for example fences. Drainage utility easements sometimes need to be marked, stormwater, ponds need to be marked for setbacks. Some permits take more time than others, so I just wanted to have...
I understand that, but I guess... It's going to suck for me to say it, but I'm just going to come out right and say it, that I guess the way that I would look at it was I would want each and every individual department then to make sure they look at these fees, make sure they're covering their overhead costs. If they are, and it's efficient, then so be it. If they come back and, oh my God, we're charging $50 more than we should, then I would expect them to be telling the council that.
I agree with you, and we do ask staff to review the fees to make recommendations every year when we look at our fee schedule.
Well, here's my question. So you got an $80... Was it $80, right?
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes I wonder if one person takes an hour and a half, this person takes five minutes. I mean, is it easy to throw one fee at one thing? I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you have to look at it as an average, or else you have to charge them per hour or something. I mean, sometimes you can't say, this usually takes this amount of time, and so we're going to charge you $80 bucks.
So you're aware... So if you're aware why this came up, a gentleman brought it to Mayor Johnson's and myself's attention on a simple basement finish, but there was a couple of issues in there, which we'll keep that separate at the moment. 99% of these homes in Isani are newer homes. Every one of these houses already have egress windows in. The basement layout is on the original plan when it's submitted, even though it's not...
Finished.
Finished, but they lay the walls out. And trust me, I look at them every single day, five days a week.
I've looked at them.
And so when somebody goes in to finish their basement, to gouge them $1,000 for a permit when you have a... What was the fee? It was a...
Plan review.
Plan review fee. 99% of the time, they're not changing anything structural. They're adding bedroom walls, bathroom wall, a living room wall, whatever. That's literally a 10-minute review for anybody that knows anything about inspections. Now, if they're changing something structurally, I totally understand that, but 99% of the time, this is not something that they're doing. They're not cutting in egress windows. Those are already in. They're not tearing out a window and putting in a big bay window. If they are, that's understandable. Then we need an engineering fee on top of that. I totally get that. The electrical permit, that's a separate entity from the City of Isani because that goes through the state with Eugene Boyle. Eugene Boyle, excuse me. I'm saying that something like a basement finish, we should have a flat fee for it. Now, this other gentleman also had a deck being done, and that's a different story. But there again, that's not a rocket scientist type of thing. An average homeowner, it would be, because they don't understand what the bearing length is on a 2x10 versus a 2x12, or 16 on center, 24 on center. But those are all things that I can understand that being brought forward to it. If we're going to use Minspec as this example, they're the ones that are going to review this plan. I'm doing my layout for my deck right now. They want to know what I'm doing. They want to know what I'm doing. I'm putting 2x10s on, 16 inches on center, you know, with this, with a cantilever of a foot, with this big a header underneath, blah, 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 blah. I spelled it out for them. He looks at it and says, well, this is going to have the calculation load, it's going to be fine. I don't need to spend three hours on here telling average Joe Blow that you need to do this, and this, and this, and this. I mean, fortunately, I understand what I'm doing, and I know what I'm doing. But we don't need to gouge these people to finish off basements, because these people are going to say, to heck with you, we're going to just finish it, and they don't realize it's going to cause a problem later for appraisal values or home inspections when they go to sell their home. They're not going to realize that. And then they're going to come to Ms. Selman and say, what do I got to do to give me a permit for this? Now, it's too late. Let's get them to come in and get the permit, make it reasonable enough for them to do a basement finish and do everything legally. You're going to pay... We're going to pay for that, the original building permit to do the basement finish. Then they're going to have a fee for if they're going to do any heating work, which is, that's just standard operating procedure. You've got your framing, you've got your heating, you've got your plumbing, and you also have your separate electrical permit. Personally, if you turn it out as a flat fee of $400 on a basement finish, if the plan is per what their house was designed, typically, they may remove one bedroom and make it a living room, but they're going to keep the other two bedrooms. They're not changing anything structurally. They're adding, actually strengthening the house because they're putting bearing... It's not considered a bearing wall because their floor trusses in there. That's what my point is, is we need to make it more reasonable for people to want to do it.
When I think, Sheila, in the fee schedule, we do have plan review, the fees that get attached, that is by the hour, minimum half hour, correct? We don't have a flat on that?
It's additional. The flat hour is an additional. Right now, plan review is 65% of the permit fee.
Okay, so that's to continue to review it?
Continue, yeah. They don't usually charge that. I haven't seen it come through.
But if you ever turn around and you look at it, okay, an average basement finish is going to be anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000, $20,000. Mr. Jankovic used to be in construction, he knows what I'm talking about, and that's not an unreasonable amount to save, anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 for a basement finish, correct? So all of a sudden, these people are going to say, well, I'm only have $2,000 invested in it. That's what they're turning in is a valuation. That's what's going to happen. So that's why I said, I think you're better off to find a flat fee, say 450, even though it's $500, but charging $1,000 for a basement finish for a permit? I'm going to be honest with you, City Blaine doesn't charge that much. And Ham Lake doesn't charge that much. These are all cities that are comparable or bigger than the City of Isani.
So Sheila, if you want to talk about the table that you have on the back, page two of your memo, is how Isani does compare with other cities, and some do have that flat rate as Councilmember Lundin's speaking about. Do you want to touch on that?
Sure. I polled a couple of cities, and there is a table on page two. Of the cities that I polled, Blaine charges a fat, flat fee of $150 for basement finish. They did say it also depends on what they're doing, so like Councilmember Lundin said, you know, if they are changing things, it may be a larger fee if they're putting, you know, different walls and things that change what the original plan was. And then North Branch is basement finish of $156, and those are the only two that have a flat fee for basement finishes. Blaine also has a flat fee of $100 for a deck, and East Bethel also has $150 for a deck. Some of the minimum permit fees, they... Blaine did their own fee schedule, Minneapolis does their own fee schedule, and then the rest of the cities that I have listed there, Dayton, North Branch, Cambridge, Princeton, Alquiver, East Bethel, all still base their fees off the 1997 UBC fee schedule, which is also attached to your packet.
You know, you show a flat fee for that, but then they're also putting an evaluation on that, too. And like I said, this one particular gentleman that I'm referring to, he had said that he has absolutely no problem paying $450 for the permit, if I'm not mistaken. You were there when we talked about it. He said that's pretty much in line with what he's been at Ham Lake and in Blaine, which he... Where he does a lot of work in. I don't even want to get into Minneapolis and St. Paul because that's just a nightmare. Those guys, you know, St. Paul's easier to work with than Minneapolis, I'll just be honest with you, but they like to base everything per this, per that, per this, per that. I'll be honest with you, a plumbing permit in Minneapolis, St. Paul for a four-bathroom house is $4,000.
Oof.
Because they base it per fixture, and then so much for this and so much for that. And I know that, because I've paid it many times. But, and I'm assuming their building is going to be... Building permits are going to be similar to the same, because they operate all pretty much on the same basis. So I think we need to look at saying that, let's make it reasonable for people without gouging them, but we're protecting ourselves in doing this. And I'll be honest with you, I don't think $400, $450, even 500 is unrealistic for a basement finish.
I could easily see 500. Just make it even.
I thought you were reading one picture over there.
That's... They base it at...
They base it at...
They base it at, then there's other variables in sight. If you look at it, 65% plan review, they're going to charge them the 65% on top of that for plan review.
What I said was, the City of Blaine charges a flat fee for basement finish of $150, just for the basement finish. And it also depends on the plan review, like you were talking about, whether they're adding different walls, different bracing, adding new windows. It'll probably be more than that, but if you're just doing a standard basement finish, it's $150 for the City of Blaine. And then also, North Branch, it's $156. I think they're putting the surcharge in there and the $5 lookup fee for the contractor license. I'm guessing that's why it's a weird number at 156, but it didn't really say. Just said basement finish, flat fee 156.
Isn't it unreasonable to put together a committee, like maybe a couple of council people and some city staff, and come up with these fees? I mean, otherwise, I mean, are we going to go through each individual fee and talk about it as a council? I mean, we can, I'm just wondering what we're going to do.
I think we could... I don't think we need to go that route. I think we can make a decision, and I think all of us think that's fair to do on something like that. I mean, I totally get it. If you're changing something structurally, that's a different story. But 99% of the time, it's not. It's just throwing up five walls, six walls, and then you're... Besides that, you're going to pay for an electrical permit, you're going to pay for a plumbing permit, you're going to pay for a heating permit. It's all basically straightforward, simple. The house is already insulated, so there isn't even an insulation inspection. They come out and look at the framing, they come out and look at the mechanicals, they come out and look at the electrical, they sheet rock. Then they come back and say, okay, it looks good. There's nothing for them to really look at on a finish for a building standpoint, other than the mechanicals, if they're completed. So it isn't like they got to make 8,000 trips. And I wouldn't be opposed that if the person did something wrong, and they have to come back to re-inspect because they failed it, it can be a fee for them to come back and re-inspect, $50 or whatever. That's the price you pay if you don't know what you're doing.
So just so I understand, is it... Are we looking at if they are doing... Since we know if they're doing a basement refinish, they have to have a plan review, but we're not going to charge them based on the valuation of the 65%? Is that what you're saying? We're going to do a flat fee because we know that those things don't take a lot of reviewing or a lot of inspections? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm saying. I think...
So for certain things, and we might consider those as like minor remodels or minor something?
Yeah.
Category of certain things that we know doesn't take an extensive amount of time?
Yeah, we'd have to... I mean, legal jargon, that's Joel's realm, but you know, Minspec can take a look at this plan and say, well, here's the plan. Okay, they got this bedroom wall, but that's where the plan was originally drawn, because you know, they don't highlight... They shadow in the lines for future rooms. They're all laid out. But honestly, the plumbing is already done, because that's in the concrete. You aren't changing much of that unless you're busting out the concrete. So those rooms are pretty much set. So is the bedrooms. So is the living room. It's just eliminating a bedroom and making it a bigger living room. You're not going to rearrange your whole house. They're going to make it work what's in front of them. So for them to look at it and say, okay, this is what they did, I know, Ms. Selman, you could see the one that I turned in for my neighbor, I just highlighted what was done for them. And it was a five-minute job for them to look at it and say, well, there's nothing structurally being changed, everything is already meeting egress, or you know, whatever. So it was a five-minute review, and was done.
So do you think that there might... Would we get any pushback from any of our residents? Let's say someone came in, they have a 900-square-foot basement, and they're finishing it. They get charged X amount of dollars. Someone comes in and they got a 2,000-square-foot basement, they're refinishing, they got charged the same amount. I would think that that takes a little bit more review?
No, not really. Not unless they're changing anything structurally, because most of the houses are already built with bearing walls already in them. The only thing that needs to be changed structurally is changing out a window size, or a header that's already existing in a bearing wall. But I'm going to go out on a limb, 95% of the houses built today are built with trusses. So they're spanning what they're going to span.
If they're changing something structurally, that's a whole new ballgame.
Obviously.
Okay, so I guess I'll ask our attorney, Joe, to just chime in to see, if we move away from some of these permits, away from evaluations based on how much the work being done is, is there any implication legally of any of that, or do you see that in other cities?
Yeah, Mayor, Council? No, I don't see that a lot, to be honest with you. It's mostly done the way that you're doing it, is what I've seen. You know, ultimately, as you indicated before, the purpose behind these fees is to pay for the cost, the average cost, and you know, maybe a lot of these homes are, as you indicate, pretty simple projects, but there's always going to be some that are not, and you have to work that into your average. And your cost isn't just the cost of the person doing the five minutes of work, it's the benefits of that person, it's providing the city hall, it's all these ancillary costs that go in with having this person as an employee, so that... You want to factor in all those things when you're doing your fees. You can put your fee wherever you want, but the point of it is to get reimbursed for the cost so that somebody's basement review doesn't end up costing John Q. Public instead, because these costs are going to get paid one way or another. It's either going to get paid by this fee, or it's going to get paid out of taxes. So you either make the person who's doing the work pay the fee, or a portion of it ends up being paid by John Q. Public. And you know, that's a policy decision, but most of the cities that I see try to ensure that all of those costs, the direct costs, indirect costs, are paid for by the applicant, so that you're not forcing that cost on everybody else.
But the other problem is, is I know many people, and I mean, I can't tell them this, but many people are going to do it and say, screw the permit. I'm just going to do it. What the hell are they going to know I'm doing it? And I know that for a fact. It doesn't happen just here in the City of Isani. It happens from here all the way down to southern Minnesota. But the problem is, it bites them in the end when they go to try to resell. And not... Most people aren't in the object of saying, I'm going to resell tomorrow. They wait 10, 15 years, and it makes that happen. We will get that money back. If we know that they're remodeling, their property value is going to increase in cost. We're going to get that increased in cost on the, you know, on taxes. You know, when you upgrade your value of your property, you're upgrading the value of your house. So the taxes are going to increase on that. So we are going to get that bigger portion back later down the road in taxes, rather than trying to stifle somebody from wanting to finish their basement.
To me, it kind of seems like we're double dipping. We're double dipping at the start, and then we get paid in taxes at the end of the year, and it seems like we're double dipping. And we're going to get Councilman Gordon for refinishing his basement right now, so you got to pay $1,000. Yeah, and then come taxes, you're going to end up paying it because your property value is going to raise, so we're going to get you a second time.
Right.
Surprise.
But there is a complete difference from a house finishing a basement that's unfinished already to a remodel. Those are two different animals. You know, some of our older houses, most people are going to come in, they're going to gut those things and remodel them completely. Now, that's a whole different realm. We are looking at just finishing a basement. You know, it isn't as much today as it was a few years ago when there was a lot of foreclosed properties, and investors would come in and buy that property, and they'd fluff and buff the upstairs, and they'd go down to the basement and finish the basement so they can get their money out of it.
A lot of these new homes in Isani, I know that when they're built brand-new, they don't finish the basement.
Yep.
So they buy this brand-new house, they have gorgeous home, but their basement's not refinished. So then when they come into the city to get their permits, because they want to refinish that basement, they're turned off. They don't even want to finish them, because they feel like they're getting nickel and dime just to refinish that basement. And a lot of comments that I hear is, had I known that, I would have just asked the builder to do it, and I mean, and I try to explain to them, either way, you're going to be paying the same thing, but they don't see it that way. And not necessarily maybe not paying the same thing, you know, maybe not. I'm not in construction. Councilman Lundin could answer this, or Ms. Selman, maybe it's different. I don't know, so don't quote me on that, but... Yeah, they could roll it in their mortgage, or their 30-year loan, or something. I mean, that's what I'm saying, is they could have rolled it that way versus now they're paying out of pocket for this later on trying to finish their basement, and they don't want to do it, because they're, you know, this costs way too much.
Or they see that permit cost, and then they say, nope, I'm not going to do it.
That's...
And then they go home, and Saturday morning, Menards drops off the load of lumber, and Saturday and Sunday, they got it all in the house, and nobody's going to see it, and they get it done anyway.
Seven out of 10 people that I've spoke to, that's... They're turned off by that permit fee, so they just don't do it.
Are there any other work to be done that would be within the same category? So I hear basement finish and decks. Is there anything else that would fall into maybe a separate category that we would have flat fees for versus a valuation-based fee?
I don't think so, because like I said, you go into... A remodel is going to be a lot more extensive. I mean, we do have some older homes in town that if they go in there, they are going to need structural work done or looked at. So I'm just saying, I'm not saying that we need to change a remodel or a new build. I'm just saying, finishing a basement off and the decks is... You go by, 99% of these new homes are built, there isn't a deck on them.
Right. So if we end up doing, just speaking out loud here, if we end up doing a separate fee that was set price for these two things, would then we potentially, if there was something that needed more review, would we use what's in the fee schedule for the $75 for additional planned review? If we said, these two things, these two, you know, basement finish and decks, we know it takes approximately so much in a planned review, it's minimal. However, in those few ones that take additional work because of someone is doing it themselves and they really don't know what to submit, so there had to be a lot of back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, would then we charge the $75 additional minimum half hour to do that extra work to recoup that cost, or would we not?
I would think we'd have to. I mean, honestly, I think we do.
We have to cover our own overhead, and that's... I mean, I understand that completely. We have to cover our overhead. And I don't think any resident's going to complain about us covering our overhead. They just feel like we're covering our overhead plus. The comment that was made to me is, well, we understand that you have to pay your people to do... The comment that was made to me is, well, we understand that you have to pay your people to do their jobs, but it seems like you're making money off of us on top of that. So where's the halfway point here? I guess that's what I would ask the staff. Is there anything that we could potentially, as Councilman Lundin said, you know, we could do a flat rate, and what would that justifiable flat rate be? Looking at the list here, I don't, the only thing that I've had complaints about were basement finishes and decks. And I really, I'll be honest, I didn't think anything about a deck until I built my own deck, and then I was like, yeah, maybe I understand what these people are talking about. My, my home's all finished, thank goodness, I bought it that way, so I didn't have to worry about it, but now we got Councilman Gordon thinking about doing his, and when he does his, is he gonna feel that way? I'd rather not put him in that spot, I'd rather not put any resident in that spot.
So, question for, for Joe then, when we look at our fee schedule, would we then, we have their valuation fee scheduled for Iscanyi and under building inspections, would we have then separate individual lines that were flat rate for those two types of work? We'd separate them out? So this is what the fee would be? Value-based fee, except for the two that we have listed within the fee schedule?
Correct, yeah, you'd have to reconfigure your chart a little bit to separate those out. Which is fine.
Okay. Another question I have would be, so we are under contract with Minspect. Our contract with Minspect, so, do you wanna speak on this, I apologize? The contract with Minspect just says that they charge and get a percentage of the fees based on what our fee schedule has, states.
So what if we're changing that fee schedule?
That would be my question.
Is that gonna, is that gonna come back to smack us, Joel?
Counsel, are you looking to potentially change these fees now, not at the beginning of next year?
I think we have to, the way it is right now with Minspect, we're under contract with them, I think that would come up and bite us in the hind end.
I think it would too.
Wait till after the first of the year, or till after their contract.
Was it $50 minimum, and then a percentage? So I mean, your percentage could change.
It could.
$50 minimum is, we have to make sure we cover, but
But they've made those percentages based off what our fee schedule said.
Or, or do we just gear ourselves for the beginning of the year? Right, that's what I'm saying, we, we would get our ducks in a row now, so the beginning of the year, we're saying, this is changed.
Ms. Solomon, I got a question for you, I just thought of it. Fences. What is the fee on putting in fences?
$80, that's a zoning permit review.
It's how much?
$80.
It's on page.
Yeah, that's a zoning permit, not a building permit.
Okay.
So we review that, and we just have to check property lines. Neighbors have to sign if it's on the property. And then we also consult with public, public works.
Yep.
Make sure all that, make sure that
Well, it's basically a zoning permit, so it's not like
Zoning, not building.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to ask, it's, I, I mean, that's a flat rate, I don't think
Does that, Josie, does that seem reasonable, or Joe, does that seem reasonable, just to wait till the beginning of the year, but get our ducks in a row?
Yes, given that you've got a contract with an outside ND right now, that based that contract on the existing fee schedule. It would, it would just be a cleaner and not give rise to any kind of a contractual issue, if you figured all this out and then made it enforceable as of January 1st.
Okay.
I think so, I think that, I think that's the best way of doing it, without having an issue with our current inspecting firm.
And what would be the proposed cost, so then staff will work on this, we look at everything in the fee schedule, but this would be one of the things that we would bring as a draft to council at the end of the year?
I guess my only concern would be, is what do we need to cover our overhead? That, that is my main concern, if $500 would cover our overhead, and would be a flat fee, then, then I say we go 500, but that's my main concern, that we have to cover our staff's overhead.
Mayor, would you like us to contact Minspect and ask them what the average plan review on these two items are? So we can average, do an average, see what the minimum, see what the highest time is? Or do you want staff to look at it just from staff's?
I'd let staff look at it from staff's, in my opinion.
I concur.
I, I don't from what I know of, of our current inspecting company, they they seem to come up with excuses for everything, and I and it's not just dealing with the city of Iscanyi, I've seen them dealing with Forest Lake, Forest Lake threw them out. They had them in there, and they threw them out, they had enough of it. Lake Elmo, same thing, they had enough of it. They weren't dealing with them anymore. And I mean, Forest Lake and Lake Elmo are not small, small fish in the ocean either. So, they just, as a matter of fact, Lake Elmo hired two full-time inspectors, just to get rid of Minspect.
So I guess the direction would be, is if the staff could look into it without involving Minspect, that's what we would ask.
But I, I do think, I agree with Mayor Johnson, I think $500 is not unreal, unrealistic. And I think we'd be fine with that, in my personal opinion. It's like I said, it takes literally five minutes to look at a plan and say, okay, this is what they're doing, you know, because I asked Ms. Solomon, I'd asked you for something, to get something from me, a copy of my plan or something, we went over that. And, literally looked at it and highlight this and highlight that. She already has a copy, 99% of the time, you're gonna have copies of these houses in there.
But Mayor, Council, just to be aware, or, so all of you are aware, staff, Ms. Solomon can do a plan review, you do have to have certain qualifications, so we do always have to sub those out. I don't know if everyone knows that, but
Which right now, Minspect does them.
Correct, but just so you're all aware, we couldn't bring that in-house if we wanted on, even if it looks like a simple deck, we can.
But, we could dictate to them, this is what we're charging for a flat fee on this. And so they better make it work.
At the beginning of the year.
At the beginning of the year.
Is that what our building inspector used to do? We had, that's why we had the building inspector, right? One time?
We used, when we had a full-time inspector, he'd use to do it here, in-house.
Yeah.
Official, building official.
Is that what we're looking to do when we get rid of Minspect? Old building inspector?
Who said we were gonna do that?
Well, it's not a secret.
So, I think that we are all on the same page with our fees. Staff's gonna do some evaluating of staff's time on looking at these permits, and we'll bring that back near the end of the year with our other suggested fee schedule changes that staff's recommending, is that correct?
Absolutely.
All right, the next thing to talk about, so Ms. Solomon drafted an RFP to ensure that we want to continue with contracted services for inspections and building official work. We just wanna verify that that is the direction council wants us to proceed with, not bringing it internally. I know Mr. Becker has shared the pros and cons of having inspecting official services inside versus outside. But I just wanna know if there was any discussion on that for Ms. Solomon to prepare, work for at the end of the year on that.
I think Ms. Solomon should go take the class and become a building official.
In spare time.
I concur.
I gotta look.
I think, I think the city could take care of that, you could just, you just have to attend the class.
I think, I think I'd like to see what we could do differently if it was shared with another city inspection. Or, what our best options are. I think we did discuss it when, we did take on Minspect, but I, I think it was readily pushed out the door, we don't wanna share with anybody. And I think because the city they were referring to didn't wanna work with the current
Well, the challenge, I actually myself reached out to Cambridge, just asked if they would, you know, entertain the idea, that was quite, quite a while ago, maybe last year, early last year. But the challenge that the city had trying to bring in our building official back, or have one in-house, was we, we didn't get candidates, because there's not a large pool to choose from. There's just not a lot of schools out there that are training people, and they're not knocking down their doors to get trained to do that kind of work. The other thing was the competitive wages. We interviewed some really good candidates that we would've liked to have come to our city and think that they would've done a fantastic job, and really knowledgeable, but even at the top of our scale at step seven, they wouldn't even consider it. Because they're making so much more, other places, and if we were, and now I do have the building official job description being reviewed in our compensation wage study that's being done currently, just to see if we were to bring it in-house, what would that competitive wage look like? So, that'll be presented when that study's all completed. But that was the biggest thing that we had a problem with. If we pay somebody a lot more to get them in here just for that position, it throws all the other department head staff and other staff at that same points out of whack.
Mayor, please share your thoughts.
He's, something I just told him. And he's just trying to think, oh, I word it right, I don't know if I can word it right. I know of a person right now. And I dealt with him in a couple of different locations. He does have the credentials to be a building official.
And would be willing to come to the city of Iscanyi.
And be willing to come to the city of Iscanyi and work as a full-time building official. I'd have to reach out to him again and discuss what he was thinking from dollars-wise.
Or better yet, let's just direct him to Josie.
Well, I would feel him out first and then bring him to Josie, because I know who he is, and I don't, he wouldn't let's just put it this way, he wouldn't feel comfortable right now talking to somebody else, let's just put it that way, okay?
I guess I would defer to Joe to ask if we can kinda look at that spot selection without opening the position, we've never done that. I don't know if we've ever done that. So, if we are looking to maybe see what's out there, what candidates would apply if they're qualified, maybe we wanna look at opening up this fall to that position to see who we get, and then entertain that?
I don't think it would hurt the fish.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, Joel, would it hurt for me to ask him what he would be happy at?
No, there's no problem in obtaining information, I think that's fine, there's no statutory required process either. There's no personnel type of bid law, for example, because they're unique, everybody's unique, so it's exempt from that whole process. It's how you hire someone is entirely up to you. But certainly, I mean, the by far, the most common thing to do is to put it out there and see see who answers it.
Just throw your bait in the water and see what you get.
And it doesn't mean that, I mean, we could, I, I don't wanna say it this way, it sounds dirty pool, but you know, we have this certain person in mind, and he's willing to work for this, and we have some other candidates to come in that are less qualified, that want more money? Or somebody that's way more qualified and wants way more money?
Or somebody that's more qualified and wants less money, you never know what you're gonna get.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the only thing, I, I do, I do think we would have to, we'd have to put it out for, you know, you know
Advertisement.
Advertisement. But if, if that's the case, I will contact him the next day or two, see what he, to re-riddle what him and I discussed earlier, in the year.
To re-what, what'd you say, to re-what?
The riddler.
And, and my comments would also be subject to whatever personnel policy you have too, I don't know if you've got anything in your personnel policy, or even city code, but it'd be more likely your policy that would cover that type of thing, as to what your procedures are.
I think, Mayor and Council, I think if we're considering it, I think now is the time, we're at that injunction point where we have an RFP, we have a contract ending, debating if the RFP should go out, now is the time, or, you know, soon, this fall would be the time if we do wanna consider it. As well as, it'll impact Mr. Becker's work to change. The biggest thing with hiring staff in-house is, especially with that position, is you're paying them benefits and all those things that go along with the salary. And if building work declines, or whatever, you're still paying that salary, but you don't have anything to fill that bucket with. So that impacts him, and he would need to know that sooner than later if we're making that shift to our budget for 2021.
I think, I think something
But it doesn't hurt to look.
I think what we ought to do is look at what we are writing out a check to Minspect per permit, or per year. Because I'm gonna tell you, if it's, it comes in at $140,000, if we hired somebody for $80,000, I'm willing to bet you, we can do it in-house for less than $140,000. And that money stays in the city, doesn't go elsewhere.
I think we can, Mr. Becker would be happy to do a comparison of what we had in our down slope years, when we actually, we used to have a building official and a building inspector back in the day, but before 2008, we did have to lay off and do some things, so we can always compare it to the worst of the times that we've had here, to see. It doesn't hurt to have that kind of information handy.
And then that also, you know, a building official could do a lot of other things. I know in our city code that rental properties have to go and be inspected, you know, there's
They did all of that before.
Yes.
A lot of building maintenance, minor building maintenance, got done by that person too.
Yep.
Partially because that person was skilled in that. But that was huge to alleviate some things off of public works.
I think what Councilman Lundin is trying to say, if there was a down period, there would be something that could be fun for that individual to do.
I think there's something, and, and that that person would have to understand if there was no inspections, or, you know, building has downturned, if you wanna keep your job, you're gonna have to be flexible enough to do something
We call that other duties as assigned?
Other duties as assigned, there we go, there's the word I'm looking for.
Did we not look into this once already, Mr. Becker? I feel like you've given us that amount once.
How, how much we paid him Minspect?
Yeah. I think, I thought you, did just you and I look at that?
Let's say this, it's definitely more than $140,000 a year.
So, let's say we hired you could just, just quick math, it's not something that you held to, but, say we hired an inspector at say, $70,000 a year. With benefits and everything, what is it, what would that come to as total?
Not more than nine, not more than 95. About ballpark.
So I mean, that's let me, let me reach out to the certain person again, and just see what he, I, I mean, I'm not, I don't like talking money to anybody, that's not it's not that place.
No, that's Mike's.
Yeah, that's Mike's, but I, I wanna feel him out for what he would think that he wanted for that position. Okay? And what he'd be comfortable at.
So with, I guess the direction we need from Ms. Solomon is, we do not want that RFP to go out then.
Yes, that's the way I look at it right now, let's hold off with that for time being.
Did you say when you had talked with Cambridge, what was their general feeling on that, and what was?
She said that they were open for the discussion, and nothing went farther, because we didn't, it wasn't brought up at that time.
I mean, is that a position that can be shared, and that would
I think it's worth checking into, because again, being at the point where we're ending a contract, this is the time to find
That's what I mean, let's not send the RFP out and weigh our options. Whether it's Councilman Lundin's option, or what Councilman Gordon's saying, let's weigh our options.
And I think that, I think we, we wanna know where we're going, I mean, Mayor Johnson and I have talked about this before, we need to get our ducks in a row. So, if, let's wait till as far, as long as we can, before we do this.
How long do you think you can wait before you'd have to?
Well, our contract with Minspect ends December 30th, this, of 2020. So, as of that day, they are done, and we have no inspector after that.
So initially, would November be too late, it'd be way too late, I would assume?
I would say we would advertise to put out our RFP in September, that maybe the second
That gives us next month. I think we should be able to have something figured out by, by next month, in the next month.
I have faith in each and every one of you to be ready by next month.
We're gonna move on to part B, or part two of this number one, but Sheila, did this, did we answer all your questions on, for so far on this? So one thing that Councilmember Lundin brought up was some question about, maybe yourself, Mayor, that people have inquired about, the new building code? And, the city of Iscanyi, if the state statute is required, trumps, or supersedes municipal code, did we, did you want a discussion on that?
I wanna know what, what the complaint was. What was the statute that he's complaining about?
I have not received any complaints.
It's the phone call that I've called you guys earlier today on, it was the phone call that I got was from a builder. The builder was complaining that Minspect is verbatim, as he put it, making up an ordinance and then enforcing that ordinance, when we've never had this before. Which, come to find out, after of course, doing a little further digging, it's actually a new state ordinance that came in, and it has to be mandated, is my understanding. And I did share with Ms. Solomon and Ms. Wood what builder that was, so I'm assuming you guys would know what ordinance he's talking about, correct?
We were, we were not informed of what complaint he had, just that there was complaints about builders
What's the new ordinance that they came out with? The state?
Mr. Mayor, it's not an ordinance, it's the new building code for 2020.
Okay, what's the new one?
Per our code, we adopt that building code.
But here's, here's a problem, and I brought this up to Ms. Wood. Is it already written in the code book? If, if it's pending, they cannot enforce it until it's an actual written code in the book, that's provided for contractors to receive. And I know this for an exact fact, because it's the same in the plumbing codes. There's things that are in the new plumbing code change, but they can't enforce it yet, because it hasn't been printed in a code book that's for sale yet. Even though we all know it's gonna change? Even though we all know it's going to change, they still have to enforce the previous code.
So the 2020 code was adopted March 30th. So it is available. Again, I don't know what the specific complaint is, so I can't tell you if it's something that's enforceable or not at this point. But per our ordinance, we've adopted that code and going forward, every plan needs to follow that code.
If I may, Councilmember Lundin, I think we'll ask the attorney to speak on this. He's got about seven, eight more minutes to spend with us and he's familiar with what the state statute has stated on this.
Yeah, Mayor Council, so just following up on what Sheila indicated, it looks like the, the state did adopt the new code on March 31st. Once it's adopted, it's state law. So, and then under 326B.121, the state building code supersedes the building code of any municipality. And then further down on that same statute, it indicates that the city must not require the building code provisions are different from the state building code with some very minor exceptions to that. So just to follow up on what she indicated, the state changed it, it's, it's, it's in play right now. City has no choice but to follow that, that new code. And it's been in the works according to this, what I'm looking at in this document for at least two years, so it shouldn't be a huge
But here's, here's, here's the kicker. The universal building code and the universal plumbing code, both state in both of them. There's a fine print underneath there and it says per local jurisdiction. The problem with the universal building code, universal plumbing code, universal mechanic code, all these codes, everything is under a, it's, it'll state on there per local jurisdiction. It's in fine print and I've got caught doing it more than once. It also, the code is so, I'm going to use the stupid words because it can be stupid, because it's all an interpretation in how it's read. I've gone to the state with some of the plumbing code changes and that's what I know most, to be honest with you. And I've gone to the state on it and you know what they tell me? How do you interpret it? And they're the ones that wrote the code. And I tell them how I interpret it? Well, then that's the way it should be. But the inspector's interpreting it this way. Well, it's per local jurisdiction. Even though it's in here and it states this, if they feel they don't like the way it's worded, you have to do this, even though it's intended to do this.
Interpretation of the code is a different issue than what code is to be interpreted.
State statutes and codes are, the statute is just telling you you have to follow the code, but the plumbing code or the building code is what's written in a book.
Correct.
Those books are this thick. I think your, your law book is thinner than our code book. It's, it's ridiculous. And I've had this debate with the state of Minnesota, Department of Health, more than once, and I keep getting the same answer. Local jurisdiction. Even though the code says this, it's local jurisdiction and how they interpret how it's worded.
But, but again, interpretation versus which code you're interpreting. My understanding from the contractor was the complaint that he's still working under the, the pre-March 31 code because that's what he's accustomed to and he felt that that was the one that was still in play because that was consistent with the city code. And I think what he was told was by Minspec is no, there's been a new state code adopted and that's what's now in play regardless of what the city code says because the city code adopts the state building code. And even if it didn't, you had to apply it anyway.
That's what I would like to know, what the issue or what his complaint was. I mean, like I said, the code books are this thick and it takes the hours to find exactly what they're looking for. So, but I will say this about Minspec. They're going to read per line and they're going to read in between the lines and they're going to tell you what they read in between the lines. I know that for a fact because I went round and round with them on some things too. Because, and not just in the city of Iscany, outside the city. I mean, I have to go through code compliance classes every year. I have to do 16 hours a year where I have to go through all the code interpretations to maintain my license. They don't. They have a, they have a general class they go to, which doesn't go into depth as way I do. So that's why I've said, I've had this debate with him before and he says, well, this is what the code says. That's how you're reading it. But these other four people are reading it completely different. But then again, you're stuck with him because he's the inspector and he's going to use his
He's who's interpreting it for the city of Iscany.
Yes. He's interpreting it for his, for where he wants to see it written. And that's why I wanted to know what the specific issue was.
We don't know. We'd have to find out more.
But I know that you, when you told me the builder's name, he's never complained about anything with the city prior to this, not like this other person, name not to be mentioned, that we've bent over backwards many times for.
I do have it. So this is what came through from Minspec. Generally speaking, I cannot say that these were made specifically by the person who called you, but here are some complaints that they've received to make the city aware of. Iscany is the only jurisdiction enforcing the new state building code. They went into effect on March 31st, 2020. So no one else is doing it, but we're doing it. That's complaint number one. No one told us that there would be a new code being adopted, so we didn't prepare for it. Complaint number two. The new code is too restrictive. Inspector should use common sense instead of following the prescriptive requirements of the state building code. And complaint number five, I've been building the house, the same, the same house for years and never had an issue.
Those are all pretty vague in my opinion.
Those are the complaints that came through Minspec, again, not through Sheila or myself.
That sounds like the same complaints I got today, actually.
But I, I will tell you this, Minspec could have said, all right, here's what I want you to do to correct this. But now you had your forewarning, we're not going to go that route anymore. I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you how this is handled. This is how I've dealt with the state even. And it's better, it's, it's always stupid to say it's always better to ask for forgiveness than permission. It's always, in these cases, it's better for permission than ask for forgiveness because it's too late at that point. But it could have been handled a little different, but he also, he should be going through his code compliance classes, which he is, the builder is supposed to be doing every year also, to maintain his contractor's license. I, those, those are pretty vague, vague things. I think it could have been handled better on both sides, not just one. I'm not picking on one or the other.
And it does say by Minspec that they are working with them and trying to help be as best they can. Again, that's one side of the story. But on the other end, we have been told by Minspec, it is their license on the line. They do enforce the code. They don't give the, we won't let, enforce it this time, but next time we will. We've been told by Minspec they don't do that because they will get their license stripped. And we, we know that by talking to the Department of Labor. It is their license on the line. The city won't, it won't come back to the city, just that.
No, I guess, I guess at this point, I'm, I would have to tell the builder that I think you need to get more educated and I'm not trying to run them out, but I, I do think that from dealings with Minspec, it's, that's it. No discussion. And get bullheaded and they stop instead of sitting down and working it out. So, and then the builder's just trying to walk on it also. In my opinion, he's trying to walk all over it. But I guess those are, you know, this, the builder should be looking into it. If it's adopted by, by, was it March you said? I think you've had time to get it figured out by now.
And I think I've said it more than once that our bullying days are over. If we can't sit down and talk about it like adults. The nice way at first, at first.
Okay, do we have, Mayor Council, do we have any other questions for Attorney Joe?
Joe, it was good to see you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all your good work.
Thank you for your time.
You just keep answering that phone when I call, Joe.
And then you bill him directly.
That's right. That's the process.
I might have to sell more plasma and blood, but I'll keep calling, Joe.
Thank you, Joel.
With that, have we covered everything under your item E1, Ms. Elman? Okay. Let's move on to E2, the police updates. Hey, Chief Myers.
Well, you should be.
All right, Mayor Council, just put together a little bit of an update. Our biggest update that we have so far is staffing. We're in the middle of a process for our staff, they're hiring. And again, I want to, again, thank the council for the whole lateral transfer piece, that whole marketing piece, putting it out there for experienced officers. I can say it's the best candidate pool we've had with a lot of experienced officers that we haven't had before because we have that opportunity. And it's been out long enough that the word is out that, you know, we do offer that pay incentive for experienced officers. So we're working through that to hire. One thing that's not on my memo that I, that put in there was the Lexipol. We went into this year, we are operating under Lexipol policy. Just so you're aware of what Lexipol is, Lexipol is a third-party vendor, if you want to call it that, that drafts the policies, updates the policies to make sure that they're the highest standard of policies that you can follow, that are vetted through their attorneys as well. So we are up and running under that policy manual compared to the policies that we had before, which were all in need of being updated. Squad purchase. We have another Dodge Drango that we approved, I think somewhere in January, February. It takes a long time to get. Plus it was shut down for a while. That should be here in a few weeks and we'll have that being set up soon. Just in the last month, listed out the grants that we received. There's a $2,954 for Department of Justice and then two grants from the Federal Urban Area Initiative Grant, one for $3,800, one for $1,800. And I don't know, Councilman Gordon, if you remember, we talked about the squad car that we had some expenditures that were over that allotment amount. This was a reimbursement on one of them. So we sought out some reimbursement under their grant money to offset what we didn't allocate for that squad purchase.
Sure.
The last one is the Department of Justice COPS hiring grant. It's a competitive grant we put in in March. So we got awarded that grant for $125,000. And we'll touch base a little bit on that because it's on the council as well. So if you want to discuss it here, maybe just as appropriate. I think there's 1,100 applicants. If I remember right, there is 15 or 18 Minnesota agencies that rewarded that grant. So it's to hire new officers for agencies to do specific things. Back in March, identified mental health as a issue that we had. So that's going to be the focus of this position. Granted, it's still a patrol officer, but we have the ability to identify some mental health issues, work as a liaison with social services, some of the mental health facilities. Interestingly enough, you're hearing a lot of that talk right now. We kind of identified that back in March as something we want to focus on. For example, we're going to the same houses two, three times a week because we can only go there to solve the problem at the time, but we know that there's an underlying cause that we want to be able to get the services there so that hopefully we can curtail those calls for services and help the people in the community. So that's the focus of this COPS grant position. Oh, skipped over. So we do have National Night Out. I put that in there too. I think it's actually on the other agenda as well. The actual National Night Out organization, which is a national organization that puts on National Night Out, has postponed it to a potential date in October. We haven't identified, you know, they haven't said it's going to happen then yet just because of the COVID issues. So there are still going to be neighborhood parties that are going to happen. I've heard from some of those people. But as an agency for us to, like we did last year, last year, try to really promote it, we're not going to be able to promote National Night Out because National Night Out as the organization is postponed. So if community members want to get together and
And you'll put that out in your Facebook pages, information, right?
Yeah, I was just going to wait till after I just talked with you, with the council and you as well, that we're going to put it out there as far as it, there's not, because National Night Out, the organization itself has postponed it, you know, we're not going to promote it. However, if somebody has a party, we're not going to hesitate to drive by and say hi or whatnot, but we're not going to have the involvement piece this year, which is kind of disheartening because last year, I don't remember the numbers we had, but I think we had like nine, which was the most we've ever had because we really promoted it last year and we're hoping for bigger numbers this year because I do think it's an important event for our community.
Just to piggyback on one thing on National Night Out, we always move our first meeting in August to a Wednesday to, to allow for council and staff to participate in National Night Out, even though it's not happening through the, through the city as Chief Myers mentioned. We will still continue to have that first meeting in August on that Wednesday, August 5th.
Okay. I like that DOJ COPS grant chief.
Yes, we're very, I put in for it not expecting much for return just because
One of 1,100 applicants?
Yes.
Nice.
I asked, can I go ahead, chief?
Sure.
I asked Chief Meyer if I could add to his police report. What concerned me was there was an article written in the paper and I felt like he, I felt like Gene Johnson from the Iscany County Shisago Star lumped our police department into his report here. I got more if the staff wants to see it as well here. But he said, law enforcement in many areas of the country, including our Twin Cities, appears to be unjust, inhumane and very discriminatory. And because it ended up in the Iscany Shisago paper. Iscany Shisago Star that he was lumping our police department into that. Because even on the bottom of his article, it says Gene Johnson, publisher emeritus of Press Publications, owner of the Iscany Shisago County Star. So I just was going to take it upon myself if, if Chief Meyer is comfortable and the city council is comfortable of responding to that with a letter to the editor and letting him know that we have full confidence in our police department and we don't think they're inhumane, unjust and very discriminatory. I thought that was a slap in the face myself to our, not only to, not only to the city of Iscany law enforcement, but the
Did you read this, chief?
Yeah, I just read it when you dropped it off earlier.
I don't even want this article.
Right.
Would, you, are you all right with me responding to this?
You do. Go right ahead. You don't want me responding to that.
And Councilmember, if you want to reach out to me sometime, I can give you some of, if you want some specific things that contradict that.
I, I think that'd be a great idea.
Okay, we'll get together. I'll, I'll, I'll put some together and then you say what you want and I'll add it into it.
I think
This definitely needs to be responded
I think it coming from, and even if you guys are okay with it, is him responding as the council as a whole, I'm okay with it. As long as he sits down with Chief Myers and they go over, you know, the brass facts and, and sends it to the editor, absolutely.
And then
See, you can see what Councilman Lundin thinks of it too, because he's already folding it and throwing it away. So, yeah, garbage.
I think it's trash.
It is.
And we could, when we ask for, after, after I write it, I would be willing to read in the minutes under, what do they call that? The first thing we do?
I, I think I stated January 7th of 2019, when I was sworn into the position of mayor, that I was heavy in public services and, and whether it was fire or police, that I believed wholeheartedly in this city's police and fire department and I'd, I'd go to bat for them any day and that's, that's I, I wouldn't even wipe my butt with that. That's how angry that makes me. So I don't want to respond to that article, but I would definitely, yes, if you would, that'd be awesome.
Okay, I'll give Chief Myers a call and we'll get it written.
All right, let's move on to item E3, the mosquito spraying. Mr. Sylvester.
Mayor Johnson and members of city council, I'd like to open a discussion on mosquitoes. Now, Public Works has gone out and sprayed six times for mosquitoes so far this summer. We started on May 27th. It takes about three and a half hours, three to three and a half hours to fog beginning at dusk. I've had some people say it's working great and some people say it's not working at all. Now, what we're spraying is the garlic concentrate and because it's concentrated, it gets mixed with water. It costs us about $65 every time we go out and fog with it. If we switch over to the product called Pursuit, which is what our other communities around us are using, it's going to go from $65 every time we fog to $500 every time we fog. In chemicals. So it's a lot more expensive. So I'd like your input on what you would like
Is that 500? The 65 is for paying somebody to go spray it and to spray it?
No, the 65 is in chemicals alone. That doesn't include
But you're buying that in a pretty massive bulk, are you not?
We bought five gallons that we started the year out with because you only use eight ounces at a time. It stretches a long ways. So we've sprayed six times with what we've, what we've purchased so far.
$65, six times.
No, 65 each time.
Or, no, 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 no. $65, six times or $65?
Each time, each time we fog, it costs $65 in chemicals.
Holy
$65, six times. If we switch over to the other product, it's $500. If we switch over to the other product, it's $500 every time we fog.
But how often would you have to fog with that?
So you're, you're talking $3,000 to spray six times?
So last summer, when I reached out to Bram in North Branch in Cambridge, Bram done it twice a week. Cambridge done it more of a complaint base. They had done it, I think they said like four or five times a summer. North Branch did it bi-weekly. Right, now I've done it the last two weeks in a row. One, we had the fireworks, we had the street dance, had complaints.
I got chewed up at the fireworks.
Yeah, they've been horrible this year, but they're horrible in North Branch too.
Yeah.
So I don't know if it's just a bad year for them or, I mean, what, what does North Branch use?
I, I...
Same stuff.
Same stuff we've been using?
The Pursuit that everybody else is using.
No, 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 no.
Well, everybody else is using the other stuff.
Yeah.
They've been horrible over there too, I don't know.
So if we think we want to try the other stuff, I'd like to just try and purchase it once, the Pursuit. Go out and try and see what the complaints do.
Can I ask you a stupid question? How about double your concentrate with the first product we're using?
We, we've, we've amped it up, we've turned it up, but now we're out of product right now.
Because I do know, I was in my backyard, 9:30 had carried me out of my yard.
I'm still confused here. Make me understand here, Matt. You're using, you said you sprayed six times a year so far.
So far.
And you're using $65 every time or that's $65 spread over that six times? Follow what I'm trying to get clear here?
Every, every time we spray, it's $65. Yep. So every time we spray, $65 is...
So what's the total, Ms. Selman?
Right there.
$390 has cost us so far. Compared to if we switch to this other product, it's going to cost us $3,000.
If we, if we do it six times, he's trying, I usually ask them to try it once.
Right, but if we did use this other product and we found out that $500 would do way better, then we potentially wouldn't have to spray six times, we could spray three.
I think I like his idea.
I think I like that idea too.
Try it once, can you get enough product just to one spray?
Yep.
Let's try that.
And let's see how it works.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering aloud here, can you, can you use the expensive product once and then go back to a less expensive product?
Well, if it doesn't work, yeah. I mean, if, if he uses the expensive product and it works, then we're golden. We know what we got to do. But if he uses it and it doesn't work, then it wouldn't make an idea. He can switch back to the other.
But I'm wondering if you have to have a maintenance product. I mean, if you do it once, does that take care of the problem altogether? Is that what you're looking at or...
I'm confused.
I'm looking to see, I would like to know if this product, I don't want to go just buy this product and spray this product for, say, that's what, this was going to fix it. I'd rather buy it once.
See what it does.
See if my complaints go away or if they get better or if I can, don't have to do it as often. We sprayed it the last three weeks because we were getting complaints. It was a street dance coming up, the fireworks was coming up, trying to stay ahead of this.
Which I, I think you guys have done a great job. I just don't think your product's working.
And that could very well be.
So I, I do like the idea, I think, to go out and try the other product, see if it makes a difference. If it does, maybe it lasts a little longer. I don't, we'll have to see. I guess I, trying it once isn't going to be the end of the world.
No, let's, let's try it and play with it and see what happens.
Mayor and council, just to make sure that we're clear, are you leaving it up to his discretion of what to continue with or do you want him to bring it back for what to do moving forward?
Try your expensive product, get some input in how it works, then bring it back.
I can do that.
All right, let's move on. Uh, E4, the street dance alcohol sales. Anyone? Oh, Ms. Garvey.
Bueller, no, sorry, mayor and council. So city staff had a local business inquire about selling alcohol at one of the upcoming city's street dances. It was last month and we didn't have enough time to get it through the system here. So that's kind of what's also on the agenda later on tonight as well. I had spoken with the Iceni Lions and Dahlheimer Beverage. Iceni Lions are the ones that actually sell the alcohol at each of the street dances and Dahlheimer Beverage is the...
Distributor.
Thank you, distributor for, that the Lions get the beer from, the alcohol from. And I spoke to both of them regarding a verbal agreement that had been around since about 2013. And that was kind of between the Lions and old staff from the city. Joe Mauer, who was a representative of the Lions, also recalls this agreement with the city and that they would be the exclusive seller of alcohol at the city's street dances. The city does receive a profit of the sales from the Lions, from each street dance and it's averaged about $200 each street dance. It kind of depended on the sale. But I also, talking with Joe, is that going forward, that, that's what he would say. They had, the Lions had agreed that it would be $200, like a minimum going forward for street dances. If they had a really good night, then that could potentially be higher, but it wouldn't be lower. Kind of in point with the last street dance that we had this past Saturday. It was a little bit lower of attendance. We also do offer a sponsorship option for local businesses and Dahlheimer Beverage has been a platinum sponsor for us for about the past five years, which is a value of about $1,000. They also provide, Dahlheimer Beverage also provides free advertising for the city through banners and signage where we advertise through, for the street dances each month. The Dahlheimer Beverage also provides the Lions the beer wagon at no cost for each of the street dances. The city does risk cancellation of Dahlheimer Beverage as a sponsor if we would allow other businesses to sell alcohol. And that was a discussion that I had with Dahlheimer then as well, is that that was a potential...
Was that my last part? Could you read that again?
The, for Dahlheimer, that Dahlheimer, that we would potentially, we could potentially lose the sponsorship from Dahlheimer if we would potentially go with another, other vendors or other businesses to sell alcohol at the street dances.
I don't know about you fellows, but this seems like a no-brainer to me.
Nope, I think the Lions is the better option with the, with the added things that are going on and...
I think we should just seclude it to the Lions and Dahlheimer and be done.
Well, it seems like a no-brainer, but I've talked to Warren and, you know, I know that's not Warren, that's Warren's brother. So...
They do look alike. I thought he was Warren when he walked in and I was like, wait a minute, that's Warren's brother, that's not Warren.
I don't, I don't even know Warren's brother's name, what's your, what's Brett? Hi Brett. But anyway, I talked to Warren and, you know, he brought up a good point. He says, you know, because I think he was the one that talked to you about getting the permit. He said that, you know, well, how many, how many food trucks do you have? Well, we, we have more than one food truck. Why can't we have more than one beer truck? And it might seem like a no-brainer, but I guess I have to agree with him. We didn't...
Then what if we, because I know we do have the microbrewery here in town, so what if we... What if we sat down, I, losing Dahlheimer would just, that'd be devastating. But what if we sat down with the Lions and the brewery and kind of came up with a compromise? Why couldn't you sell the breweries?
The one thing that I would like to bring up, mayor and council, and Mike may also be able to shed some light on this is, distributors are under strict regulations on who they can advertise with. For example, if, let's say someone approached Jenny and said, you know, I am with Budweiser and I want to give you a thousand dollar sponsorship, you know, and Jenny wants to add them to the banner. Dahlheimer's distributor with, as being a Coors Light distributor, cannot be advertised on the same banner as Budweiser. There's a lot of strict regulations that they follow on that and they would not be able to put it on there. They would not make the banners for her even if they had another company come to sell there. They would be able to speak more on those rules, but I do know that those rules exist. I do want to mention a comment on Councilmember Burgley's about the other food vendors. We do have not to compete with food vendors as well. Now, I'm sure that you'd argue that craft beer is not the same as Coors, but we do have that. So if Jenny had, we have IRA as one of the vendors and they have deep-fried cheese curds and those kinds of things. Now, if another place came in that had the same kind of deep-fried foods, she would likely turn them away. One, we want to give good business to the vendors that we have and we want to keep that not competing and have a variety.
Well, in the same breath, this is Iceni business and, and you're right. Craft brewery is not the same as, as whatever they're selling out there. I am a lion and I, I get it. I mean, you know, I, I've been out there selling beer. I haven't yet this year, but probably at the next street dance. So I get that exclusivity stuff, but in the same, same breath, we're here to promote Iceni business.
But here's, here's the thing I got to say. So you're willing to throw away a lot of money that's given to us and I, and, and don't get me wrong. I like Warren, Warren very, very much and I'm, I'm really happy that he's doing what he's doing. But I can't, we could lose a potential lot of money out of this thing. Would Warren be willing to throw in what Dahlheimer Brewery is doing for us? You got, it's a business sense at this point, Paul. It's 100% business point because the city is operating...
This is not business at this point because business, business...
But my point is, Paul, it's a business sense because we're paying for the street dance, plain and simple.
I get that.
If we get, if we're getting $1,500 back, that helps to offset our costs of what we're paying out for the street dance.
Yeah, but we also have an Iceni business in town. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we should do it. What I'm saying is we, it's not a no-brainer either.
Well, it's not, it is and it isn't. I, I, I don't want, I, I think Warren is...
I can't say we can take an Iceni business and just throw it away. You've interrupted me, now I'm interrupting you. Don't throw your pen.
Excuse me, Paul.
You excuse me!
All right, both of you are out of order.
I'm done.
All right?
Yes.
That's enough. We don't need to sit up here and argue like children. This is a discussion.
Okay.
I understand your point and I, I fully support Iceni businesses. There's, there's nobody gut checking you on that. And there's nobody gut checking you on, uh, this is a no-brainer. Okay, so just calm down. We can discuss this like adults. I understand what both you are saying, but unfortunately, I'm going to have to lean to the point where that's, that's money we're throwing out the window.
That's fine, you, that's why you're mayor. You have your right to your opinion. I'm just stating mine, that's all I'm doing.
And that's all I want to hear from you, but I don't need, don't do this, don't do that, don't interrupt me. We're, we're not children here, we're adults, okay?
I agree completely with Paul. I think it's, it's, uh, it's a totally different thing than what, what the Lions are selling and I think they should be allowed to, to be a part of the street dances.
So what if we, what if we reduced or, or said, you know, we understand Dahlheimer's point of view, we'll reduce that sponsorship? And what if the brew, the, the craft brewery is, is willing to sponsor, then, you know, then I guess the money would offset itself? I, I don't know if that would work. I don't know if it would, we could put them on the same banner. I don't, I don't know. I, I guess what I'm trying to do is...
Mayor, if I may?
I, I understand what these two are saying, but I also understand with Councilman Lundin saying, I wish Councilman Colson was here because he would kind of offset what our thought is. But he's not, so I guess I have to play the middle man.
Unfortunately, we can't really change what we got going right now for this year. This is not something, that's what I was trying to get a point across, was we can't change what we've done already this year for the upcoming street dances. We can't change that. We've already, we've already signed a contract agreement already for this time. This would be something we have to discuss in the future.
We've, what we've done is we've accepted their donation of $1,000 and we've cashed that check and that has gone into the fund.
So yeah, you, we're going to refund their money?
That's not even, that's not even my point. Why, I don't know why they just can't show up. I mean, we, we don't do, what about the truck vendors? Do we ask them for donations and all this and that? Does everybody donate a thousand bucks, everybody out there, all the trucks and...
Because we would...
They pay a vendor fee.
We would be...
Okay, I'm...
Correct me if I'm wrong, wouldn't we be kind of like be violating that donation law? I guess you could call it or regulation or...
Well, what I will say is we do not have a policy in place. As Jenny did mention, we have a verbal agreement that's been done since I've been here in 2013. That is part of what we do want to solidify through council is if we are going to keep with the, what, what is currently being done, it should be memorialized in writing. No, everybody has the opportunity to, to give sponsorships if they want. There's no contractual agreement that we have with Dahlheimer nor the Lions, but it's out of respect that Jenny just met, reached out to them in these hypotheticals, which I would ask her and she'll get more information that if this does happen exactly, will you pull out? Yes or no, not possibly. I mean, we don't have concrete answers. We didn't know how this whole conversation was going to go. But I think that if the city is considering going away from the verbal agreement...
I'm willing to entertain it, but I'm not looking to get kicked into the growing at the same time, if that makes sense, Ms. Garvey. So I'm willing to entertain letting the brewery come in with Dahlheimer and the Lions Club, but I'm not going to get kicked into growing. So if they're threatening to kick me in the growing, then we're going to leave it as is this year and we can discuss it for next year.
Why would they, why would they pull out for one thing? And a verbal agreement from 2013, I mean, that's, that's garbage.
Because it's a respect. I'd pull out if it was my business.
That's garbage. A verbal agreement from seven years ago.
You just did garbage by trampling over our verbal agreement.
From seven years ago? When you weren't here, I wasn't here?
Correct.
You know, I mean, that's...
Councilman Burgley and Councilman Lundin were here, but we weren't, you're right.
Not seven years ago, I wasn't.
Okay, well, Councilman Burgley wasn't here seven years ago.
Six years ago.
I'm not looking to disrespect anybody as my...
No, but I mean, you're not saying that they can't come here and that they can't...
I'm not saying that.
They're going to continue to sell the beer with the Lions and they're going to continue to, to want to have that advertisement. You know, I mean, it's, it's, they're, they're still going to want to compete. They're not going to want, want, uh, want them to sell all the beer, so why would they pull out?
You would hope? Well, they could pull out their sponsor fee, absolutely.
They could, but I doubt they will.
Well, and what, what would happen, I think that if they did pull out their sponsorship fee, could the Lions still sell the beer? Sure, the Lions would rent the trailer, the Lions would buy the kegs and then they get the return fund, just like any other kind of event of where you purchase alcohol and you give back the retainer of all these different things. I think we don't have the answer if that would happen or not because we were dealing in hypotheticals.
You could change your permit fee for alcohol to, I think a food truck is $25 for a permit fee for a candy use.
50, isn't it?
It's $50 for a non-Iceni resident or business. It's $25 for a business. However, the Lions don't pay that because there was the, I'll just use the term verbal agreement that we wanted beer sold at our event. We had a mutual relationship with, you give us part of the sales and it's typically about $250, $200. I've seen 250, I've seen 150, that we got that back to offset the costs of what it took to, doesn't cover the cost? No, but it just offset the cost.
I think we need more conversation on it with Joe Mauer, with the Lions.
I think, I think with the brewery.
With the brewery. Yeah, I, I, I think we need more conversation.
I mean, what if we, you know, I hate to say this, but what if we lowered our compensation to offset what they're, I mean, potentially losing? I, I go back to competition is good myself. I think if everybody's successful, everybody's happy and, and, you know, I, some people might now, I'm not going to buy Coors beer, but I will buy a, a, a craft beer. I mean, you know, and I'm not talking about me personally, but I'm saying what one person, what some people might use as an excuse.
We're not directly competing with the Lions. We're not selling anything in any remotely similar to Coors Light or, or, uh, anything.
Yeah.
The beer we serve or nothing like that, so we're not competing directly. And Bud, and the beef log there above, it was two ice cream trucks. They're, uh, ice cream, it was ice cream, isn't it? Are they that much different?
Well, just as...
Not competing against each other?
One has novelty ice cream where it's like ice cream in a package. One has hard scoop ice cream. I mean, we do try to diversify and keep it different.
Valid point. Valid point. Let's have more conversation on that, Ms. Garvey, with, with the brewery, with the Lions.
So do you want that to come back to Cow?
Yes, please.
With maybe ask Joe Mauer if he would attend maybe on behalf of the Lions?
Yes. And if you or Warren wouldn't mind attending as well, we'll...
And then mayor, just on this evening's city council meeting, we do have the request for the license on that. Perhaps the recommendation from staff would be to postpone that approval or denial until we've had this next conversation.
I would agree. Just because I don't want you to get a license or spend your money if... Correct. I'm all about supporting that brewery. I'm happy it's here.
So you're saying that on the agenda tonight, there's a decision on whether they're going to be allowed to go to the street dance? The next street dance?
No, the decision, the decision, or what's being decided tonight, they did apply for a temporary liquor license. What they're, I believe, seeking to use that for is a street dance. That's not defined within the license request. It's just a request of a temporary liquor license.
They have their own liquor license in their brewery.
Well, I'm just saying, if they're going to, if they want to try to make the next street dance, then, you know, I was pushing it to the next Cow meeting. I'm just saying, if they're going to, if they want to try to make the next street dance, then, you know, us pushing it to the next Cow meeting, is that going to be cutting it too close for them to be prepared for that?
The next, the next street dance is August 8th. They would not make it for that, but they would potentially, excuse me, for the one in September.
Okay. To this meeting, right?
This meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to see a vote on it, getting it, getting it done here. Dan will be here for that meeting and he can kind of settle the gridlock here.
Let's let it go on the council then. Let's move on to, uh, E5. We're kind of pressed for time here, the utility delinquency.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, by, when we did the emergency declaration, um, because of the COVID-19 work or, you know.
I wouldn't go anywhere yet, sir. If we're going to push this to the council.
You could come back, um, it, for the meeting, it starts at seven if you wanted to, but yeah, you would need to be present for that.
Gives you time for a craft brew.
So when we made the emergency declaration due to the COVID-19 pandemic, it was by recommendation to the league, which we did here in the city of Iceni, which we did not shut off people's water, um, because you should not. They need to be able to hand wash and things like that. Typically, uh, during the, from spring to fall, you can shut off water for people for non-payment of their utility bill. We have not enacted that. We also did not charge late fees. Staff is wondering what council would like us to do, um, because COVID seems to be lingering on. Do we want to have, uh, this go through the end of the year with we're not charging late fees? So people can be on their feet, making payments if they need to, work with the city? Or when would you like the city to start charging late fees and potentially do shut offs?
I, I personally, I, I'll be honest, I was, I was just mumbling to myself, I'd like to see it lifted August 1st, but we're kind of stuck in a rock and a hard place, to be honest. I mean, maybe we ought to just keep going to the end of the year.
I say as long as we're going to have a, what do we call it?
COVID?
Yeah, I was going to say scandemic, pandemic, that, uh.
Scandemic? I mean pandemic?
Then I say, I say, don't charge late fees.
Until the end of the year?
No, until this whole thing's done.
Well, it'd be the end of the year, we'd hope. Keep our fingers crossed. If not, we'll revisit it then. You okay with that, Councilman Gordon? Councilman Lundin?
So one thing that I will work with Mr. Becker and his rate team is, uh, we will put on two billing cycles, letting them know in advance, on this date, we will start, um, charging the late fees once again. Please contact us and so we will send out those reminders, letting people know that it will be coming.
And, and just to be clear, um, if we're, if we're not taking any action right now, then we won't be doing disconnects.
Correct.
That, that timeline will end before we'll have another opportunity. Anybody's severely delinquent, we will still assess the, that balance onto their taxes, but.
Can we still talk to them about it? We just can't cut it off? Can we say, hey, you know, you're, you're late, you're late?
And they would be informed. It does tell them on their bill that they have, you know, outstanding balances. Um, but come winter, you can't shut off people's water because of cold water rule or cold weather rule, excuse me. Um, but as Mr. Becker said, we would assess it to their taxes. So the city will be paid if they have a high bill.
And, and they will get a letter about the assessment and have, there will be the public hearing and there'll be input and all that. So everybody will have their chance.
Yep, perfect. Yep. All right, the, uh, E6, the East Dual Heritage Boulevard Intersection Control Update. I'm assuming, Ms. Wood, you're handling this because you and I were the only two there, so.
Correct. So I'd like to just update council on that. So we, um, as you know, the city was talking with, um, Iceni Coney Engineering about doing something with the East Dual Heritage Intersection, about the safety issues that we are, we're seeing, as well as traffic control issues with semis trying to get in and out with no signal or no roundabout of any sort, no, no traffic control. Um, the city was able to have a meeting with Minco to consider, one of the options was to do a four-way intersection, but that would take acquisition of the property that is owned by Minco next to the subway lift station that we have. There was adequate space to put in a road through there. However, they were not interested in showing support for that option because they felt that they would need to move the front of their store to face that road and it would have a huge remodel to them, which was between 175 to 300,000, that they were not looking to take on. They said, you know, if the city wanted to help out, they could, um, but they were not going to pay for that. Um, at that time, we decided that we would show, share with Iceni Coney that please proceed with finalizing that report, so then we can adopt the report and the most viable options are going to be a three-legged intersection or some sort of roundabout. And we'll see that, the report once it's finalized. I'll share that with you.
Thank you.
We can skip over E7, correct, Chief?
Yes.
We'll go to E8, volunteer involvement for potential Bluebird Park projects. This I asked to be put on. I was approached by a resident asking, um, he had heard we wanted to put a pavilion in Bluebird Park. Why not reach out to the community and ask for volunteer builders and/or volunteered material? So I thought, let's ask the council what they think about that. So if we posted that we were looking for volunteer contractors and/or volunteer material and then we, you know, gave them a plaque saying this was donated and, and volunteered by so-and-so, you know, after it was built, it, to recognize them, what do we think about opening it up and seeing if the community will volunteer to, to build it?
There's, there's a lot of places. I think down at the Viking Stadium, people bought the bricks and they had their names put in the brick and that was all done on the sidewalk. And they donated a lot of money towards offsetting the cost of the Viking Stadium. It's not a bad idea. I guess we'd have to, there again, should be talking to the city attorney to see what we can and can't do to make sure we're not getting ourselves in hot water.
That was, that was my question. Do we have any liability? I mean, I'm all for.